I'd like to call this Preburg Community High School District 77 Board of Education meeting to order. Kendra, can you do the rule call?
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Mrs. Staub?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Madrell?
Here.
Mr. Haas? Catherine Marler?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Gouge?
Here.
Forum, will you please rise and say the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any agenda changes this evening?
Uh, no.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up to any public comments?
Hi, I'm Janie. I am here for a work visit for a class, a school pressing program.
Wonderful.
Y'all love Janie Milan, that's my mom.
Okay, we've all had a chance to look over the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve that this evening.
So moved.
Is that good? Second one, Mr. Reynolds? We'll start with you, Mr. Madrell.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Do we have any committee reports this evening? Student members report.
Okay, so first, I got some stuff about homecoming week. So this week started off with spirit week that leads up to the homecoming dance. Our dress-up days this year were America Monday, Trick or Treat Tuesday, Retro Wednesday, Red Night Thursday, and Pre-Work Friday, in which each class wears a different color. Everyone is very excited for this week and most of the students have a lot of fun with it and dress up. They were crazy red, white, blue hats, socks, shirts, capes, and lots of other America-themed outfits on Monday. On Tuesday, all the seniors got their togas, which we've been talking about and planning for like a month now. Wednesday, we saw themes all the way from the 50s to the 90s and all the way in between, and today, everyone was either camo or hillbilly. Tomorrow is the last dress-up day and also the class games, which student council is running. They are planning events like trivia, the obstacle course, cake decorating, the art banners, and a pep rally. Some clubs are also planning to sell pizza and nachos and other treats for lunch as well. Everyone is very excited. Student council will be decorating the gym for homecoming after the class games tomorrow around 2:00, and then everyone will likely be at the football game tomorrow night to support our football team. Finally, Saturday is the homecoming dance from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. The theme this year is Vegas Lights. Students will take pictures and go out to dinner and then dance. So now, aside from homecoming week, one topic that I wanted to mention, that I've heard a lot of students talk about lately, is the issue of Chromebook Internet being shut down at 12:00 a.m. This was implemented towards the end of the school year last year, and students still complain about it a lot. Many of us have sports and jobs and activities outside of school that prevent us from going straight home and getting all of our homework done before midnight. So oftentimes, a student might have multiple hours of homework, and even if they manage their time wisely, starting at 10:00 and only having two hours to finish can be very difficult. I believe it is in the students' best interests that this constraint be reconsidered and possibly removed. And then, I also believe that the school closing at 4:00 is proving to be a very good change. Initially, when it was announced, everyone was complaining about it, but now packing up and bringing our backpacks with us to the track before practice instead of leaving our belongings in the school is just kind of becoming a habit, and it is a positive step for school safety measures. And that's all my points for tonight.
Any questions or comments? What you would think as far as with the Chromebook, you'd want it just to be open all night, or would you want, would you suggest it shut off at 1:00 or something? I mean, kids staying up all night is definitely not good for them anyway.
Yeah, well, see, my reasoning for bringing it up, I just feel like, I agree that it's not good for you to stay up all night doing stuff, but like, like for me personally, I would rather, like even if it sucks to stay up that late, I would rather stay up and get all my homework done. I just hate having to rush in the morning, trying to get other homework done in the morning. So, and a lot of people have been talking about it lately because of like soccer going on right now and cross-country and all the other sports, and just saying that it's really hard once the Chromebooks shut off at 12:00, that they have to like try and use their phone or just not do it.
Okay.
So.
I didn't know if any of the other students had maybe said, boy, it would be great if it at least be open on until 1:00.
I mean, I think that would definitely be better. So.
Okay. Just refresh your memory, one, two, three.
When we started to look, we found there was a lot of use during the night, and it was a lot of gaming kind of things, and found that. You had parents calling saying that their kids are up all night long playing video games.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Right, yeah. I will say that one of the things that Jeff has done, and for the parents, is he sends out, I don't know how often it is, an email that shows the usage for the student, and it actually says, you know, how much are they using it during the school day, how much in the evening, late evening, and then it'll list what their searches and things are, so that way everybody knows what their kids are doing. So that's kind of, he found that out, I forget, sometime this summer or early this fall. So that's kind of along the same lines that I think helps out.
Yeah.
That's important, that's the whiz, but I gotta ask the question, is there any way that you can block this gaming stuff out so we can't?
It is. So, so every, every time you block something, two or three things pop up, and then, and then we find out there's ways to get in the back door of different things. So, he's kind, there's all kinds of things blocked.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Can we perhaps shut it down to everything but the school network after midnight then?
We'll have to do research to.
Right, so there isn't really, I mean, it's just the school filter that goes through the filter, and they basically shut that down, so they're not able to log on. I mean, one of the things we can't do, we could try 1:00, and then he just keeps an eye on it. We could, you know, we could try those things, and that was something we had talked about, but we just haven't done it.
Any other questions or comments this time? Okay. Principals report.
Okay, our instructional coaches are back rolling with the staff now. Mr. Allard is taking the lead in this group this year. We're turning our Hild, Doki, Michelle Etter, Amanda Stewart, Natalie West Becker, Doug Zergel, and then we've been interviewing this week for another one, which is going to be talked about a little bit later, who that person is to replace Ryan Benauer, who went over to the grade school. They met with the teachers during that first in-service day. They're talking about the topics this year are, we're continuing with student engagement and how to increase that in classes, but then we're also adding this year good questioning techniques. We're using the Bloom's taxonomy models where it breaks it down from simple questions to complex questions, what's appropriate for what class, how do we get kids not just to recall, but actually to put the knowledge and the questions to use and synthesize and all those things. So, all the teachers and their instructional coaches are working on developing and practicing using more advanced questioning for their classes, which is really cool. And then, assessment is still always one of the top things as well. How are we assessing? I mean, it's not just paper and pencil and test. You know, are we assessing with questions, reviews, games? How can we, you know, better ensure our kids are actually understanding the material? So, those are the three main goals this year that the instructional coaches in the school will be focusing on. Steve Jackson from the Rotary approached us and has an interest of opening a chapter, it's not a chapter, hold on, let me bring the name of it. You may have heard of it.
Rotary Act.
Rotary Act. Would like to bring that to our high school with all the scholarships the Rotary has provided to the school. We're looking to make a connection with the school so students can participate in activities to better the community in the international sector, also to work with those kids who are coming in, volunteerism, and giving our kids an opportunity to work with the Rotary for some volunteer activities. And I think this is a great time to do this. I feel like in the last couple of years, the hours of volunteering with our kids has increased. We have a lot of teachers doing things, and again, I just think the more we can do things for our community, we can work with our community groups, I think it's a good thing for our school. Heather Schein has been talking about being the liaison and working with Mr. Jackson. There's some school-wide programs that they do with other schools, and then they also have set up community programs just for this community. So I, you know, like to move forward with that and start gaining hopefully some interest for some students. I think it would be a great way to connect with our community. Class sponsors have been meeting to discuss how we can include more opportunities for student participation in school activities. We did talk about doing the berm as well. The freshmen, sophomores, and juniors are class sponsors, and kids are supposed to decorate the berm for homecoming this week, and the seniors wanted senior act by themselves, so they've been working on that. But there's a lot of discussion about whether we should go back to having class officers. Is it too much having a student council and class officers? Is there enough to do? What would the officers do? So we're in some discussions to see how that program might change a little bit as well. As Catherine mentioned, we are in homecoming week. This is definitely one of the favorite weeks of the students and kids. The teachers, I mean, packed, as she said, with dress-up days. The carnival's tomorrow, the game is Friday, the dance is Saturday. We also have a big cross-country meet Saturday, so this is a, an incredibly busy time. So, if you want a chance to come on out and check things out, it's a lot of fun. Homecoming prom are two of my favorite events to see the students, because even the kids that are shy or quiet and aren't always your most outgoing kids, you can tell when they walk in the doors and they're, they're dressed up and might have a tie on, might have a dress on, they're, they're kind of just all smiles, and you see a nice level of confidence that you don't want to see during the school day. So, it's really, really nice to see. One other thing I didn't have on my report is that I am on the advisory committee for the IHSA for athletes with disabilities. This is a rather new program with the IHSA in the last couple of years, and I just went to their meeting this week in Bloomington. And in case you don't know this, the IHSA offers more sporting events now for students with disabilities. So if you go up to the state basketball, boys' state basketball tournament, you have a chance to see wheelchair basketball. So, you're looking more at your Paralympic-type activities. Right now, in a state series, they have track and field, wheelchair basketball. Those are the two ones for state series. They also offer accommodations we've had, not in our school, but other local schools may have had, a student that has disabilities that wants to do bowling or, and those type of things. So the IHSA will work on getting accommodations for those students to participate. And they also have another program, which I'm learning about too, which is called the Unified Sports Program, which they actually are partnering with the Special Olympics. And their, schools can put teams together. There's a combination of kids with impairment or the mental impairment type thing versus just the physical disabilities, and you combine kids with disabilities and able-bodied traditional students, and you can go and you can compete in different activities. So you can do basketball, bass fishing. They're putting together a unified dance. So I think it's really, really cool that they're doing this with our transition program and our life skills program. We've had a number of those kids participating in Special Olympics, and then I feel like our students as a whole have always just been very welcoming and great and love those kids. So if we could become a unified school and, you know, send a couple of our kids up there with a couple of our life skills transition things, I think that would be a really positive thing for our school, so I'm going to look more into that. But on the IHSA website, they just developed a whole tab for students with disabilities, so parents can go to that. There are also companies too that are starting to provide equipment for students, especially like the wheelchair racing. Those chairs cost about $10,000, so there's a lot of companies that are starting to get involved and to donate and help families with students with disabilities participate in the IHSA sports. So, it's a really cool thing. Doug, for you.
Any questions or comments?
Any question for other schools getting more and more involved with that in our area? I mean, I don't see anything in paper.
They're, so I don't think there's been as many kids from this area. I think O'Fallon had somebody that was in bowling. I think Waterloo had one or two students. So, you know, when I first got into it, I was like, well, you know, if we only have one student that is in a wheelchair, how are we going to do wheelchair basketball? But they said they are looking to connect those single individuals with other people in the area so that they can put teams together. So hopefully, as this is beginning, you know, starting to grow now and hopefully get more publicized, just see more students being able to participate.
Sounds true. In track, the past three years, there's a kid from Waterloo who competes in wheelchair, and others, gentlemen, in O'Fallon. I'm trying to think, there's a couple of, there's not, there's not a whole lot yet. I mean, the first year, it was just, I think three years ago, I think it was just the Waterloo kid, then it was the Waterloo kid, the O'Fallon kid, then there was, I think, three or four this last year. And then they're also doing wheelchair shot put, wheelchair discus up there too. I didn't get to watch those events, but they, I saw them receive their medals and things there at the state last year. So it's awesome. So that's, that gives us another avenue to succeed, so.
Wonderful. We had somebody, we had a wheelchair in our meet last year. I don't remember which school it was from, probably the Waterloo kid, because we had one here. How about we did it? It was 400 or something.
Yeah, they do the 100, 200, 400. I think they do the 800 up there. Okay, superintendents report.
All right, I included a list of bills in the packet that were passed into law. Probably the most significant, in my opinion, was the one that didn't pass, was one that the Governor Robert vetoed. That was to raise the minimum teacher salary to $40,000. I think the big pushback was from smaller districts that have a fairly low starting salary and the impact to them. Also, there are a handful of mandates that are in there, and Jill and I are going to look at that. Just at first glance, it looks like we're already meeting most of those mandates, and we cover a lot of that stuff in class. So, a lot of those go into place January 1st, so we'll take a look at that and move forward. Each of you have in your packet that, kind of a beige yellow sheet. It's your statement of economic interest. Each board member's required to fill that out, and then submit that to the county. So if you would, please take care of that. If you have any questions, let Kendra or I know, and we can help you through that. There is another sheet that's in your packet for key dates of the school board election for next spring, and I believe that is, we have three members that would be eligible or eligible run, that's Mr. Gouge, Mr. Parrish, and so I'll be taking my wallet out a little bit later to bribe. I just said that on camera. Sorry. So that's in there, and actually, the petition, the date to file, start filing your petitions or filling your petitions out was Monday. So.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. So that's already getting going. The last thing I have is the first meeting for the Illinois Association of School Boards is October 2nd in Collinsville, so we really need to register if anybody's interested in going, and if you are, you can let Kendra know tonight if you're interested in going to that. That way she can register us, we can arrange for transportation. That's all I have right now.
Any questions or comments?
Are these even going to be interest statements to, we just, these are the county clerk office. Did we have it put online?
Yeah, I, I was, we were talking before, I always fill mine out online, and I don't know why, and that's a paper copy, but yes, it should say on there where it goes.
Yeah, they usually send some kind of an email, and we did that.
That's what the agent was saying, we've already done it this year, this school year. Or, it was like April or May that we did it.
Did you do anything prior to submitting your, oh wait, back in April, you had a lot of, never mind, that's, your election's been passed.
Right, yeah. I had to do it for the, yeah, I had to do it for the election. I had to do it after I was elected, and then I had to do it in April again.
You have to do it once a year, and all that?
Once a school year or once a calendar year?
Once.
Oh, there you go. I'll go, I can update them tomorrow.
Okay. And we could, we could call too.
Well, I'll need to contact.
We'll make an open, this call, we'll find out.
And then just your text message or something?
Yes.
I will do that.
Move on to old business?
Um, Dennis has asked if we would wait to have this discussion about A until he gets here. He said it shouldn't be here anytime now, so if it's all right, you guys will just jump to B, and then we'll come back to it at the end of the old business.
Okay.
The second, item B is approve the hardware bid. We had, I think we had four, three or four companies, five companies come in for the pre-bid meeting. We had three actual bids come in. The bids are included in your packet. Camarco came in at the lowest bid at $47,326. The other two bids were $103,000 and $69,000, which is, it amazes me that these bids are so far apart. But Mike Staub at FDM has gone through Camarco's bid, and everything's in order, and feel like this is, it's got everything in there. It's the hardware that's in the specs, and so everything's ready to go, and I think it's appropriate that we go ahead and prove this.
Any questions or comments regarding this right now?
Mr. Preppi?
Yeah.
I need to interrupt, but I don't have that item on my agenda.
On B?
I go from the district reorganization resolution to conduct a budget hearing. But I didn't look at the agendas that were.
Yeah, it's, if that was a, that's my mistake then. Okay. You go grab one, a little, check and see if it's on there.
Is it up here?
Yeah.
No, just B, B and C?
Probably not, since it wasn't, yeah, it would wait, which is going to push us off, but it's, unless it's posted in the agenda or not, I don't know.
Never mind.
So there's no, we can talk about this. So, in your packets, I don't know if Tammy, do you have this or not, but there's no vote on this.
Okay.
So we can actually talk about it. And there's some documents that are in your packet that I wanted to point out. Your folders versus a five, that five-year plan. This is something that I did not have updated when we did the budget, the first reading of the budget in August. And so just, it should look familiar to board members. It starts with fiscal year '18, goes through fiscal year '22, and it just looks at funds 20, which is the building grounds, fund 70, which is the working cash, and fund 90, which is the health life safety. Going through this, we've entered all the large projects that are in these agenda items, and we have, feel pretty good about the numbers. You will notice, I think at one point in time, we get pretty low or even negative in one of our funds, but we're pretty close in fiscal year '21 in the Health Life Safety Fund. As I've talked about in the, later on in this item, the asbestos, the plan that we're looking at is using a different method, which should say was between 30 and 40 percent, but I've included the traditional method, which is the higher estimate. It will also include the replacement of the tile and things like that that we're going to pull up. But I think this kind of gives a little bit of an idea that we're in pretty decent shape. The other point I wanted to make is, for each one of these years of budget expenses, there is a line item of $200,000 in each one of the budget expense for each one, which is for equipment and upgrades. So it's just, it's kind of a blanket, $200,000 if we want, if we need it for some kind of roof or we need it for tile. I think last year, we used $15,000 of it for different projects. So there is a good buffer that's in there. The other item that's in there that I wanted to point out is the asbestos plan. So this is actually the main idea for this item that I want to get board members to kind of give me direction on. I just wanted to point this out. So, this is that, that map that's here. So I met with Jeff Bowles from Environmental Consultants a couple of weeks ago, and we looked at the remaining asbestos that we know that we have in the building. They always leave a little caveat that says, you know, they can't look in a wall, so they don't know if there's anything in between walls. But as far as what's left is basically tile, and in all these colored areas, they have either asbestos tile or asbestos that's in the mastic for the tile. And, and talking with them, he says that we're actually in a very good place, that this asbestos can be taken care of using this heated method where you basically go in and they just use a machine and it heats up the tile and pops it up. You don't have to do a big envelope. You don't have to wash people down. They don't have to be in the spacesuits. You just have to lock the door. But actually, once it's done, you can actually come in. As soon as they leave with the tile, you come in and put new tile in. So he said we're actually in a pretty good place. And his recommendation, and this is for two reasons, is to break this up into smaller projects that you would do, one project each year. And the first reason is the financial aspect. The total estimated budget, if we went to traditional method, was about $274,000. But we can break this up and make it a little more easier to swallow as our yearly levy comes in for the Health Life, our Health Life Safety Fund. And so we kind of prioritize these items. The second reason, I forgot to mention this, is because the number of people that can do this is not very great in the area. They basically go and they get a laborer from the hall that specializes in this kind of hazardous work, and you have to book them fairly early. So, they have, you know, if we can get them this fall, we could probably get some people this summer, but there's not enough to get them to do all this in one summer, so it's easier to spread this out. So we kind of broke this down into smaller projects. Project A is the band room and N16. B is a group of rooms in the central hallway. C is a farther west group of rooms in the central hallway. And then D is the cafeteria. A, B, and C all have asbestos tile, and those all, you know, if the tile's not damaged, it doesn't cause a threat. But if the board is interested in removing the tile, that's the tile that's asbestos. D is just mastic, and so the tile itself is not asbestos, but it's the mastic that they use to put the tile down. His recommendation is that we do not touch D until we're going to renovate the cafeteria, if ever.
Does it have the same caveat if the tile's damaged, does that mastic, does that still cause?
It would be exposed if it actually, if you pulled it off.
So is that a danger, just the mastic being exposed, and is it glue?
It's asbestos, so yeah, I mean, if you got it in the air.
Okay.
And Dennis, Dennis is certified, he can do, I think it's up to three square feet. So if the tile is damaged, same thing with these other, if the tile's damaged, he's got the training to take care of it. But he said, you know, with the amount of coats of wax you have on there, sealing you have on there, you know, you're not, he goes, I would not touch that. Schools typically do not touch that kind of stuff. But the others is tile. And so, the, if the board is interested, we can file health life safety amendment with the state for the entire project, and then do it over what would be basically three years. Where next summer, we try to get A done, the following summer, B and C, and so forth. And that's kind of broken down into this five-year plan. But I, you know, he's the expert. His recommendation is not to touch D. I kind of feel like that's a good idea to do that. I don't, we don't have any plans to renovate that cafeteria soon, but I know some board members expressed concern about the asbestos tile, so that's where we're at. So basically, on this item, I'm just looking for a direction from the board. If they're all right, I'll get ahold of Mike, and we'll start the health life safety paperwork. Of course, there's no money spent as far as the bids and things like that. It's the tile, we'd have to bid it all out and go from there.
Any questions or comments?
There's no asbestos in the north end?
It's all taken care of.
It's all taken care of.
That was all done.
That was, that's all right.
Yeah, and the piping, the north end, the hall fame, and all that stuff, that was all done this summer.
Eventually, this is all going to have to begin eventually.
There, there isn't a law now that says you have to have asbestos out. There isn't anything that says you have to have it out.
What's the common practice for most schools?
Take it out.
You're right.
Yeah.
Is there a mandate right now that says there's anything wrong with our floors that we need to? That, that we need to, we need to do something?
No. No, it's just the fact that the tile is asbestos.
So, when I came on board and was appointed to the building ground, like walk the building, like, what a good you guys. And I talked to Greg and I asked him to come up with a plan so we could get this out here in four years. That was the idea of, of talking about it and some of the, I didn't get involved with it. I have some questions around D because I don't, we're talking about changing the carpet in there sometime. How does that gonna impact?
The, it has a border. There's no, that, that's, it's just under the tile.
It's all glue on?
I would assume it's glue on. Yeah.
So it's not gonna?
The, the carpet, the carpet does not have any asbestos in it.
No, I, I take any anchor points for the stretching.
There's a border.
Okay.
Yeah. And I don't think it's stretched. I think it's, it's kinda just a, rolled out into a, a glue on the surface.
I was just asking to verify that.
Yeah.
But towards the other three, I think we definitely need to do it. It's been put off. And anytime you get ready to do any work in the building, if you haven't got it done ahead of time, everything you can do is gonna slow down because you gotta stop and go deal with that first. Secondly, it's the right thing to do. We need to get it out of here.
I agree. We're doing it in a plan. It prevents us from having to do it, oh, something broke or something's messed up. Now we have to, we suddenly have this large shelf. I think if we're cleaning it out, it needs to go.
I have to ask where, where the proof that it poses any kind of danger is.
Asbestos.
Yeah, I know asbestos. Asbestos in the air, breathing it in, I get it.
It only, it only, it only does when the tile's damaged.
There's a lot of wear and tear in school building.
All the tile is in, in perfect shape and under, under wax. Like you said, it's stable. Um, I think it's a huge expense that you're spending. I mean, I need more information in order if, where this, this danger, I know what it's made of. I get it. There's particulates of asbestos in it. And if you grind it up and you blow it and you breathe it in, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a problem. That's not what we have.
I agree with Mike also. I, it's best practice to get it done. And also, I just want to keep putting it off. It's just gonna cost more to go along. So I, I, I have to agree with, with, with starting with the plan and getting it out of here.
Yeah, 'cause when we did that walk through and we went to the north building, we saw some broken tiles and that's all taken care of. Um...
Well, they weren't asbestos then. So if they were broken tiles.
But I mean, tiles do break.
Sure.
And so that, that isn't, so I like having a plan.
Right, right. If we had one tile break, Dennis can come and take care of that. But, you know, I, I mean, the reason this is taken out, it's, it's because of that, it's, it's asbestos and that it's just a, uh, scary thing and people don't want it in the building.
I don't want it in the building.
Yeah, right.
It's probably a matter of time till the state decides that it has to go and forces to it.
And then we have a million-dollar.
To Dean's point, the cost is gonna be a lot. So I think it's best to have a plan and to attack it like we've been. So I think a strong, strong hold, if we go ahead and proceed with, with getting it out of there.
And I think it's best to do the, go ahead and do the whole three-year plan rather than doing a separate one and wasting your time with that paperwork every year.
And that was, that was, the plan was to go forward with that.
Agreed. Okay, do you wanna go back to A?
Yeah, let's go, let's go ahead and go back to A. Dennis, we waited on this, uh, reorganization discussion. So, uh, met with, uh, super tenants from, uh, District Seventy and District One Thirty and talked about, uh, where we're at. At that point in time, which is last week, we did not have a resolution from, uh, Dr. Ottborn and his group. Uh, I actually just got a resolution from him yesterday, but it was just for Freeport High School. It wasn't for the others. Each district will have common, uh, resolution, but it'll be, uh, individualized. But during our discussion, we, we, uh, talked about a couple of things. One of the things is we need, uh, we need the resolution, which we really don't have in a form ready to, um, have the board act on it. And then we also needed some kind of vindication from Saint La Boree that, uh, they were not interested in, in, in the reorganization. And we'll need that to move forward to file a waiver if we're gonna do a hybrid, um, reorganization system. So, uh, you know, we can kinda talk tonight if we want about reorganization. Uh, but our plan, uh, thought was that we needed to wait till, uh, October until we had all that information in place. Uh, we could look at the financials as well with Saint La Boree not being involved, um, and, and kinda give us a better idea of financially what it would look like. Uh, but that's kinda where we're at right now. We're kinda in a holding pattern. Uh, I don't see any issues at all having the resolution, everything ready for October. I don't know if we'll have all the financials. Uh, but, and again, uh, I wanted to point out that this, the resolution that we are, we are looking at, uh, 'cause I've had a sneak peek, is to, um, agree to form a committee of ten just to get more information. It's not, it's not a, um, resolution to, uh, move forward with, that, that we're in favor of consolidation of any form, reorganization of any form. It's just to gather more information. So that's where I'm at.
Okay. Any questions or comments on that? And then we wait till October till we get some more, get the information.
Okay. The next is, uh, uh, this is our annual business. In September is to conduct a budget hearing. Uh, this is required. Uh, this basically allows the public to make any comments that they'd like to make before the board, um, discusses the second reading of the budget and moves forward with passing it hopefully. So it's appropriate for us to adjourn the regular meeting going to a, a budget hearing.
Okay, we need a motion.
I need to adjourn the regular meeting and conduct a budget hearing.
For what? For what? Very. Motion to go. Can we roll call that?
Uh, no.
No?
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now out of our regular meeting and in our budget hearing. Uh, at this time, we'll open up the floor. Any public comments on the budget? Say none? Okay. And now I need a motion to adjourn our budget hearing. We can be in our regular meeting. So we're back in our regular meeting.
Okay, so the next item is to approve the reading, uh, uh, the second reading and adopt the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget. Uh, so a lot of the information that I talked about as far as the five-year plan is in the budget. Uh, I mentioned that there's a, a little bit of room in, not a little bit, a fair amount of room in all the expenses of two-hundred-thousand dollars that's built in for additional, uh, building, uh, projects or equipment if we need to purchase that. Uh, I also have a document in there. This is pretty much, I believe, the same document that you guys saw in August. It is the, um, the fund balances from last year compared to this year. And as you can see, the, um, this is this form here, that the, uh, the fund balances are all going up, um, with the, um, exceptions to Fund Twenty, which we are starting to spend a little bit of money out of Fund Twenty to improve the building. So I don't have any issue with that. Uh, Fund Forty is the purchase of several different buses that we have done. And, uh, and then Fund Ninety is, uh, quite a bit down. Uh, that's our health life safety, but that's our, um, big project that we just, uh, worked on. So overall, the, the budget, I'm sorry, overall, the fund balances are going well, and I feel good about that. I feel good about the, the budget that we're presenting. Uh, Diane's worked quite a bit on it. And so if anybody, you know, we happen to answer any questions, but I think it's appropriate that we approve that.
I only got one question. So I have that, but I believe you got it in our office. What I see today on the education, but.
Yeah.
Do you have a difference there? Do you have something to say?
No, no, because this is from, um, if I, if I'm thinking your questions, right, this is, these are from balances from June thirtieth. And so what she's gave you in the, is it the financial report in the packet?
That's what you guys gave us last time.
Then these would be up to date. I think what she gave is up to date.
Up to date?
Yeah. And so if there's any difference, and there might be slight differences in what would come in or what we're predicting to have come in.
What's the difference?
Um, okay, I know what, so what, what has to happen is for TRS, this is a weird, how this works, is we have to, um, have a credit and a debit for, for that. And I imagine what happened is she forgot to take it out of the other one.
The other one?
Yeah. And, uh, it's, it's just in a weird accounting, 'cause I, I think you'll see it in this big packet here, uh, this budget worksheet. There's an eight-hundred-thousand, um, expense and an eight-hundred, hundred-thousand, um, revenue. And that all has to do with, uh, it, it is, I don't know why we have to do it, but it, because it is nothing, because we're saying we're gonna get it and then we're gonna spend it. And so it's just basically things we have to do together.
I went back to last year's, these numbers, uh, today she put more, what we would see in our last year.
Yeah, there's some slight differences.
I just.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? We need a motion to approve the second reading.
So, motion by Mr. Gao?
Second.
So we're gonna stop. Uh, Mike, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
So we're on to new business.
Now we're on to new business.
All right. Uh, we've got four members going to the triple I. And, uh, there is a general assembly. Uh, we need a delegate for that. So, um, I'm sure you guys have all talked to each other ahead of time. See who picked the, the long straw, 'cause it's pretty exciting stuff.
I don't say, I'm gonna say, nobody wants to do it. I don't mind doing it.
So that's set Saturday morning, I believe. And so, um, there's a whole slew of, of, of items that are on the platform.
I'd like to move the board member Gao to represent the FCHS at the two thousand eighteen delegate assembly.
I'll second that.
Second. Would you?
All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I'll say no.
You can go.
They passed it. You just got a lesson.
Just, just to note, next time that comes around, I think most of us, Dean's, well, I've done three or four times.
I have not, no.
It's interesting, you know, if, if you're so inclined, it ties up a morning and you gotta do a lot of reading at that time. So, it's, but it's interesting. Just, just so we don't look at this as a total major. I've, I've always heard for years, it was, people always talk to down, well, I finally did one, but there's nothing to this.
Oh, okay.
Just keep raising your paddle.
Well, except for the, oh, you gotta do the reading and, but then, then get your, then get an opinion on, on this. So, yeah, just raise your paddle and pull up.
Okay, Steve?
Um, this is, uh, this is listed in there as used to building walkers, or used to building by walkers. Um, and, uh, I wrote to you guys that, uh, I know we've done this for years, but I think in, uh, kind of some of the steps we've been taking to, uh, keep the building a little more secure, we've eliminated doors that were open in the morning. Uh, we have an administrator at the two doors that are open in the morning. Uh, I just, I think, you know, and I know there are, I know specifically of three people that have been very faithful and come in and walk. And I feel bad about, um, the fact that, that I, I recommended that we no longer allow the walkers in, in the building in the morning. And that's basically just to make sure that the only people that are coming to the building have to, have business with the school. And so it's a student or a parent comes in. Um, the other thing is, um, we currently now, I believe, open the, the doors at six o'clock. The doors stay open throughout the evening. Um, I, I don't think we can do that anymore. So, um, I don't think there's a motion that needs to be made. Um, I do want a little bit of time before we put this in place, assuming the board is okay with it, to give the public notification to put something in the Tribune, um, to also put something on our Facebook. But, uh, I put a door locking, um, time in there. Um, and, and each one of those times is basically, uh, are all those times are when there's some kind of supervision by the staff. Either the office is open or one of us are there. Uh, but I, I just think we're at a point now where we're gonna have to start, uh, you know, changing how we, um, ha- have access to the building. And so I don't know if anybody had any comments. Uh, I put it here, we don't believe any motion for this. Uh, just procedurally, we can change this, but I do want to say that I want a little bit of time to let people know that this is a change we're gonna make.
Anytime anybody wants to conduct business or come in or a parent or whoever, you can still walk in the door, punch the button.
Yes.
It's just not wide open.
Well, it, it, we only want people in the building, especially when the kids are here, that have business with the school. Uh, you know, we've got a sign on the track that you're not supposed to walk on the track or be out there when school's in session. Um, and, and this is all, has to do with safety. And unfortunately, I had a discussion with somebody, this is the state that this world is in now.
Yeah.
The only question I have is, I know, uh, have you talked this over with all the teachers and staff? Does change?
The coaches.
The reason I ask that is that Homer Grant's in that record, it's forty-five, there's some stuff to ban. This is the conflict that's, uh...
So what's gonna have to happen? And, and, and like I told the staff at the beginning of the year, uh, this, we live in a world where we're gonna be inconvenienced. And so if you're on a sporting team, you're gonna have to meet at this time, the coach is gonna have to let you in. You know, we, we, we can't, prop, prop doors open. We can't do that. I mean, that's been a practice here. Uh, so, you know, there's, there's other people that use the facility. They'll still be able to use the facility, um, which is something, you know, if we wanna talk about it, probably to the post-actual, we talked about it. But, uh, uh, there are, uh, you know, uh, community, they have community meetings here. The band, uh, parents meet here. Uh, we have different teams that, that use it. So we're gonna have to figure out ways to schedule that to where they have access, but only they have access. And, and we have electronic, uh, open and close the doors, so we can do that kinda stuff. But, um, they're, they're, talking with Coach Lar, we've talked with most of the coaches. They understand they're gonna be inconvenienced. The football's over, the door isn't open where they often come in. There's gonna have to be a coach that opens the door. Uh, the band now doesn't go to the band room to come in, they come in the front door. And so we've already started to try to do some of this stuff. It's just, we're gonna have to be a little more diligent about who we let in.
By what, that's basically the band?
Oh, yeah.
Now, okay.
It's like a, you're a six-four-five, right?
Right.
Sad, but that's the state of the, of, every day I turn on my computers, new shooting.
One other thing I would ask, if you know three people that, if we could personally reach out to them.
Right. Great. You said there are just three people that can regularly do this?
There, 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 that I remember, there are three people that, that came in.
That's a part of it.
Do what?
That's a part of it.
In the building?
Like I'm in, I'm afraid.
Well, there's, there's specific reason, no. Uh, I don't know that I've ever seen.
Maybe I, I may have seen it.
But I, I, I know of three others. And I'll reach out. Yeah.
All right, let's move on.
Uh, this is annual business. We recognize, uh, two of our groups that help support our, um, kids. Uh, first is the mentioned athletic booster club, and the second is the music boosters. And I'd like, uh, the board to recognize them as official, um, supporters and organizations. I agree with guys, cool.
We got a motion for that?
I understand.
Second. Second, by Mr. Madrell. All of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
And the last thing I have is, um, a bus. Um, we are in need of a small bus. Um, actually, last year, we were looking at replacing the bus fifty-two with one of the buses that we purchased last year. But once the school year got going on, we found out that there were some more runs and we had buses, so we had to put fifty-two back in its place. It's, uh, it's showing lots of wear and tear, so we need... It's, it's shown lots of wear and tear, so we need a small bus. In your packet, with, that was shared with you, was the breakdown of the bids of the bus, Southern Bus and Mobility. Again, this year has a state bus bid. What that does is it, it allows us to go ahead and buy buses for them without having to bid these out. They have to submit a bid proposal to the state. The state then awards the bus bid based on the lowest bid proposal. And this is what they give us. So we are, the state has, in essence, saved us that bid process. This bus is almost identical to the bus, the little yellow bus that we got last year. It does have a wheelchair lift. One other thing that we are looking to include in this is a camera, which we did include. The other one, we just bought it after the back. So I'm interested in you guys approving a bus for the price of $53,007. It's an 18-plus-one, each wheelchair, passenger-equipped bus.
Any questions or comments on that? Do we have a motion to approve the purchase of an 18-plus-one bus from Southern Bus and Mobility? Move? McDrell, a motion? McDrell, second. Dennis, we'll start with you.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do we have any board correspondence?
We do. Uh, we have a couple of thank you notes. One was from the, the parish family. We sent a little thing for Elaine. And the other was from Jane Beetz on her retirement gift that the board bestowed upon her.
Do we have any, do we have any addenda items?
We don't.
Okay. Do we have a reason to go in a closed session?
We do. We have some personnel issues and some student discipline issues to talk about in closed session.
Do we have a motion to go in a closed session?
So moved.
Mr. McGee, motion?
Second.
So, Mr. McGee, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. We're now in a closed session. Thank you all for coming. Okay, we're back for closed session.
All right. Move to accept the resignation of Casey Rowe as FCHS cleaner?
So moved.
Second. Mr. McDrell, we'll start with you.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move to approve Ronnie Stewart and Mr. Patrick McGevely as co-coordinators of the after-school wait program with the stipend being split 50-50.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move to approve Mrs. Shire as the post-prom sponsor for the 18-18 school year.
So moved.
Seconded.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes.
Move to approve Katie Melton as a class sponsor of the class of 2020.
So moved. Start with you, Dean.
Aye.
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 Uh, move to approve...
Aye.
Did you say?
Move to approve Patrick McGevely as an instructional coach.
So moved.
Second.
Start with me. Aye.
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 Motion passes. Need a motion to adjourn this evening? So moved. Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Hey, that signature card, uh, what was the...